Hello.
Finally turned into summer around here, didn't it?
Yeah.
Tony?
Watching your baseball game?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
The Legion?
I don't intend to nothing.
Oh, wow.
Hmm.
Right over here, isn't it?
In Shelby at that Legion field.
The, um... I mean, his on-the-board chair's been getting aggressive up here.
Well, I wonder what happened there?
It's taped over here and some areas too. I don't know, somebody's...
Well, now, this chair is all dogged up.
Oh, yeah. Where it was too high.
We just had it too high.
Yeah, that was true, yeah.
Somebody spun around.
It's the budget meeting, so we can have it approved by July first.
I thought so. So, why are we not at a table?
I don't know.
Because this is not a workshop. This is an actual...
It's an actual...
This is an actual council meeting.
This is the July meeting.
This is the July meeting? I thought it was the budget.
If it's up to... If the council's okay with that, we will cancel the July meeting and won't meet again until August.
Okay.
Since we have... Since we needed to do this to get the budget fixed.
Right.
Okay. I thought it was just the regular budget meeting.
You're right.
Okay. Yep.
I thought we already canceled it.
I don't... I don't think so.
I thought that's what the last motion was, is to move the July meeting to the June.
Oh, I don't know.
Today.
We said today is special meeting. We didn't formally cancel July.
Okay.
Okay, because I thought, yeah, July was like the second week, July eleventh or something.
It would be the twelfth, I believe. If it's... If it pleases the council, we will cancel that tonight and not meet again until August. Yeah?
Hot.
It is getting hot.
Yeah.
So, it's gonna be a longer meet.
Just come from American League Field.
I don't know. I missed... I've missed, uh, hmm, a good game.
Missed a given last night.
Connor hit one over right at the beginning.
First inning.
Yep.
Two home runs, first inning.
Yeah, Connor and then, um...
Post eighty-two?
Post eighty-two, yeah.
Connor would bat first. Hit first, went over fence and then Dixon.
And, uh, the guy from Burns.
Dixon.
Uh, I'm... I'm not...
We got some good Burns players.
Yeah. Hot up.
Marty?
How are you?
I'm good. You all right?
All right.
They don't want deep water bottles open, do they? Squeeze the bottle, then all the water comes out. A lot of bad fish back there in the back row.
Fall asleep when he opens that wall. All right, I'll call the, uh, Tanae Bowling Springs Special Town Council meeting for June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-three to order. Our first, uh, item of routine business is adopting the agenda. Pretty short list tonight. Any, uh, changes or suggestions for amendment? If not, is there a motion to approve?
A new agenda be approved.
All right. Councilman Green with the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Gant. You may record your votes. All right, the agenda is adopted. Um, our first item, uh, of business is, uh, adopting the... The budget for twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Um, I first want to thank the staff for your diligence and expertise in creating the different options for us and for what you do each and every day with excellence and professionalism. I agree with Mayor Ellis's assessment about the greatness of our small town, and that wouldn't even be close to possible without the ways in which you go about taking care of us all. Often those ways go above and beyond expectations. I also have great respect and appreciation for the care and vision that the members of this council displays. Your concerns and questions are always thoughtful and forward-looking, and so many of the wonderful things that are happening and that are in the pipeline for Bowling Springs are due in very large part to your contributions and talents. I want to give us a little bit of context. Um, I look back at the, uh, budgets since I've been here and since two thousand fifteen, the budget that I inherited. Uh, the tax rate was at thirty-two cents. The next year, it went to thirty-three cents because the revaluation came in lower. The property values went down, and so revenue neutral was to add a cent. The following years, seventeen and eighteen, it went to thirty-seven because of the mandatory county fire tax, uh, that we didn't have an option with. The following two years, uh, council did vote a penny each year to get to thirty-eight, and then thirty-nine, that nineteen and twenty year at thirty-nine was when we began to claw our way back to somewhat comparable pay, um, doing that first pay study and then the park renovations. We stayed at thirty-nine in twenty and twenty-one, and then when the revow came in, revenue neutral was to... To drop back to thirty-five, but instead, we went to thirty-seven and remained there last year. So, we are at thirty-seven. Council has ultimately voted for two cents since two thousand fifteen and given those two cents back, um, um, in... In the year of the revow. Our strategic plans for the past few years involve working to acquire the old elementary school, business recruitment, more community events, streetscapes, intersection improvements, better walkability, focus on parks and rec, among many other ideas. We've also worked to improve the recruitment and retention of excellent staff members who protect us and serve us in uniform, who maintain our clean water and sanitation departments, handle our finances, and administer the increasing load of the day-to-day activities in this growing town. We've seen the benefit of having a planner position. We struck gold with the ten thousand we spent to get Grayson. And though there are so many ways we could point to a return of investment, a return on investment from having quality staff, an easy place to see that is in the almost one million dollar in grants we have acquired in just the past two years. We have amazing partnerships that have been cultivated well. We've worked carefully to ensure that the money we give to the Ruby Y is well-spent and accounted for, and we will continue to do so. But as we pursue expanding our parks facilities, the Y is a natural partner for the town and that venture and their community folks. Our relationship with the Broad River Greenway has flourished over the years, and they have been such a tremendous help with our music events, and the river and trails are gems of this area. We have exciting possibilities coming up with the Earl Scruggs Center, and we are the home, the only place in the county that has a regionally acclaimed four-year university, a university with first-class facilities and students that so often end up as part of this community for well beyond the four years that they are enrolled. Thankfully, my wife is one of those. We are a university town that also boasts two of the finest elementary schools in the county, which feed into Crest, which is the flagship of excellence in this area. We should see ourselves as we are. We aren't just a pass-through town. We're a town with a location that's just minutes from pathways to several major cities, but is nestled in these beautiful rolling hills and situated with slower-paced lifestyles. We're home to Garden Web University, home to the students of Crest High School, and we have the most amazing people you'll find anywhere. We are poised to move forward with fine housing developments, great local business development, increased opportunities for community building through town events, parks and rec, and a spruced-up downtown look and feel. Respectful growth for sure, but we are at the crossroads of opportunity without a doubt. Thank you for indulging me there. And with that, uh, council, you have three options presented before you, A, B, and C, um, that, uh, Mr. Longino and... And the staff have worked on. Uh, option C is recommended, which was the original budget... Budget presented with the one-cent increase. Uh, you have the half-cent with option B and, uh, no change in the tax rate with option A. Questions, comments, discussion?
Well, I'd like to add and point out that in each option, the ninety-five-hundred-dollar reduction for the mower is not listed. So, you have to take that into, or you should take that into consideration. So, in option A, the total reduction is thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars, and option B, the total reduction is twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. But you give an additional revenue with a half-cent increase. So, by my calculations, option A comes in at twenty-five hundred dollars over target. Option B comes in at seven thousand dollars over target.
So, is that from the first page of your report?
Yes.
So, eight, ten, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-four, twenty-six should be what the option A totals?
Right, but... But we didn't consider the ninety-five-hundred-dollar savings that... Because you had... What was it, nineteen thousand for a mower? Whatever. We cut it in half.
Yes, sir. So, this... So, option A says we were... We're cutting those things out of the budget, so that's only twenty-six thousand instead of the thirty-three thousand that the penny would get us?
Well, I don't see it that way because the mower took out ninety-five hundred dollars.
So, that... Yeah, that's about ten thousand from... Well, this is twenty-six, so that's four. That's seven thousand instead of the ninety-five hundred dollars. So, there would be a twenty-five hundred dollar quote-unquote surplus in that one, but that's...
Right.
Yeah.
So, by having the twenty-five hundred dollar surplus, you're saying we don't need the thirty-three? We need somewhere between a half cent and a full cent? Is that what I'm interpreting with that?
Well, I'm just saying it... The reductions in total, with no tax increase, you have a twenty-five hundred dollar surplus. With the target... The target reduction was thirty-three thousand dollars.
I... I would add that thirty-three thousand is a round number estimate based on the devaluation for the town, and the nineteen and the ninety-five hundred are round number estimates on mower prices, assuming those stay the same.
Sure. Well, I mean, over half the budget is a guesstimate.
It is, yeah. I... That's why I don't think it should come down to twenty-five hundred dollars and make or break a... An argument, but...
I'll share my thoughts. I personally think, and I've looked at it a lot and thought about it a lot, I personally think that the board will be remiss if we do not increase taxes by one cent. I think with the price increases we've seen just in inflation, with, uh, not knowing what's out there, eight thousand dollars for tires for the garbage truck, we're just in a period of inflation. Plus, I see if we don't kind of stay the course and get in good financial shape, then what the council is going to be faced with in a year or two is a four or a five cents tax increase. So, I think we'd be much more prudent to increase the taxes one cent. But I also need... I've got to speak my piece about the Y. And... And I want to... I think Barbara... I think Ms. Fitch does a super job at the Y. I think the things that concern me are beyond Barbara. I don't think... Or Ms. Fitch, I'm sorry. I call her that on a daily basis. I don't think the decision to the information we're asking for, I think it's beyond her. Now, we got a lot of information from them at the last meeting. Good stuff, but nobody said, "Here's where your forty thousand dollars went." And that's what we've asked them to give us. If we had a contract with somebody else and the deliverable was, "Show us where you spent this forty thousand dollars." If they didn't deliver that, then we wouldn't accept him. I'm afraid that if we increase them, then they're going to say, "Well, they'll increase it anyway. Just put them off." I think... And I think if we give them an increase, then that loss of revenue or income is going to impact some of our own staff in... In having the resources that they need. So, I think we'd be putting that resource above our own resources. So, I am in favor of incre... I'm definitely in favor of increasing the taxes one cent, but I'm also in favor of increasing it one cent and holding the Y at forty thousand dollars. But I am... I just... I just think not to increase the taxes in a... In a responsible increase, a one-cent increase, and probably be... And I'm... I'm probably going to be not be here then, but I think you... You'd be digging yourself a hole. And even when we have our audits thing, we're getting tight in some areas anyway. Is that not true? That we're getting really tight, and I think we're just, uh, tightening that noose a little tighter than I... I think we ought to. And I think a one-cent increase is a responsible thing to do, and I'd have no problem in defending that in the community if needed.
I... I totally agree with Tommy. I think, um, especially given what, um, the mayor just said, um, we've not had a significant tax increase, and taxers are going to go up. I mean, it... Our federal taxes, state taxes, it's coming. Inflation's out the roof. I would much rather go up one percent now than in the next year or two go up five percent, um, because that's really going to hurt. And one percent, it says on here, is less than twenty dollars per year.
For the average household of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand in value.
Yeah.
Yep. So...
I mean, it's...
To your point, sure, I'll just spend McDonald's coffee once a month for that price.
Yeah, I mean, because who wants to... We have a lot that we want to do. We're going to have to... We've, you know, are challenged with salaries and keeping employees, keeping good employees.
When we've not been fully staffed in how long?
Well, we get staffed, and then they leave because they go somewhere else and find a higher-paying job. And some don't give a notice.
Well, uh, do we have statistics on that? What? That... That people are leaving for higher-paid jobs and going elsewhere?
Um, I don't have statistics, but I mean, I have firsthand knowledge of, yeah, people taking jobs.
Who were those people that left?
Um, there was one that went to Rutherford County. Um, there was one that, uh, I think went to Shelby. We had, uh, one public works employee go to work for Neelin Cole for seven dollars more an hour. Um, I want to say we had another public works employee leave too, but, yeah, I mean, that's... That's stuff we, yeah, we document when...
It's happening everywhere. I mean, it's happening, you know, at little mama pop drugstore.
Yeah, and my... To my point, I think we all experience... I mean, State North Carolina can't get employees. We... Public sector, private sector, we all can't get employees. And, um, my whole point about all that is that you can pay people tons of money, and they're still going to look for another opportunity. Uh, money isn't always the reason people work in a situation. I think that we have a really great work environment here. We have wonderful facilities. We have wonderful equipment. We have wonderful car. And I don't think that our calls for service and our work output is equal to what those environments that are paying that amount of money and able to pay that amount of money has for those employees. So, I'm sort of always really cautious about that when people say people are leaving for, uh, more money and more situations. Yeah, I understand that, but we have a really great place to work, and I think some people work here because they love the environment and love the job. Um, the other thing is, you know, I'm not against employees and helping them. We've done that under Lucas Shires, and we've done that with the ARPA funds. And, um, you know, we're... We're certainly... I would never be one of those people saying, "Well, let's pay them less or reduce the workforce," but we... We need to be real careful when we say all the taxes are going up because this board right here decides whether the taxes go up or not, and that's on the local level. And it is real dollars. It might be only twenty dollars and a couple of whatever it is to somebody, but to somebody else in a lower economic bracket may see that in a different way. So, I... I think it's really, um... I just think we need to be cautious in moving forward, and I agree with, uh, Tommy in one sense that, um, we don't want to get to a point where we have to do a huge tax increase at one time just to be able to sustain what we have currently doing.
But I... I do want to point out, in the history of tax increases, the second bullet point on page four and item number four, if you just look at the numbers on the surface, it appears that people were paying less taxes, but they're not. I've said it ten times. My tax bill went up fifteen percent that year. It's because of the reevaluation. Doesn't have... It doesn't... I mean, it does have a thing to do with what you charge per hundred, but the reevaluation was the catalyst to that change.
And we are due for one again.
And wasn't some of that fifteen percent... I mean, would you say more of that went to the county than it went to Bowling Springs, or was all that fifteen percent to Bowling Springs?
In total, fifteen percent. I do not know which piece went where. I would say... I would say it was fairly equal, but I think they returned their... The county, when I say they, I'll be specific. The county returned their rate to revenue neutral. Revenue neutral for us was thirty-five, and we went to thirty-seven. So, you can't just look at that tax per one hundred and get the real story.
I... I agree with that. I think the larger story is that the... The revow is based on the price of everything going up, and so when we have more revenue coming in for the current tax rate that we're at, the revenue neutral is just presented to show what that offset is. Revenue neutral is only just a statutory requirement that we have to show. It's not something that we have to... To do or really consider. So, when the price of everything goes up, the value of everything goes up, and so everything's worth more, and we get more money based on that, but we're also paying more for the garbage truck tires and those types of things as well. So, everything, I think, in the environment is going up. But, I mean, to your point, the... The revenue is going up, but so are the expenses, if that makes sense.
So, I guess my question is, do we know the timing? If assessments are happening next year, they won't take effect until calendar year twenty-four and twenty-five, right?
Right.
So, we won't see the net gain of those assessments if we stayed at revenue net... Neutral
That's right.
for next year, right?
Yeah.
Then by that second fiscal year rolls around, the assessments are in, and we're still revenue neutral, we could possibly go back a penny or two on paper, right? Because assessments went up, and we stayed neutral from two years before.
Yeah, and... And I... And I don't... And I'm... I'm not challenging Pat at all or Councilman Litten, but, you know, the reality to me is we are where we are, you know, and... And all that's well and good, but, uh, you know, prices are going up, and... And I... And I agree with some of what Marty said, but I know for a fact, people... Uh, we can't just advertise, say, "We're a great place to work." You... You really like it here, although I think we are. But I think going in, if I can make seven dollars an hour, and I'm a young man with a family to support, that seven dollars is... Maybe I'm willing to work harder for that seven dollars. Maybe... Maybe the... You know, the working conditions are different. They are different everywhere. But, uh, the reality of it is, a young person, uh, you can't fault them for that. You can't fault them for going somewhere else, and I think they do go. In fact, I talked to a couple who... We're looking at jobs here who didn't take them because they can make more money somewhere else. And I can tell them, "Hey, it's a great place to work. Got a great, you know, public works director. You'll really love it." It just... It just goes so far. And, uh, I think the reality of it is, we just got to deal with where we are, and I think... I think we'd be... We would not be fulfilling our obligation to the taxpayers of Cleveland County if we did not increase taxes by one cent.
Yeah, it's definitely a fine line of paying people enough and then, you know, keeping them here. The value of being here definitely... Definitely is a valid point. Um, we just, uh... And I would say that we probably have lost some of those people that have regretted leaving afterwards when they go to...
I don't doubt that either, but some of them don't come.
Yeah.
Those... Those, I mean, they just don't come.
Yeah.
So, they don't know the... How... What the working conditions are. The ones who leave, you can do an exit interview, and you get a little bit of information, but not... Not true. You know, mine would... How many people are applying? I mean, are... Are people applying? Are qualified people applying? I guess I need to say that, and then they don't have to answer that.
Yeah, those are... Those are two different answers, yeah.
They're two different answers.
Um, we do get a, uh... I mean, we have a position open. We get one, two applications, so it's... It's enough for us to do interviews and to try and keep that applicant pool rolling forward, but it's... We're not overwhelmed by it.
And some of those probably are not people you want to hire anyway.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's my thoughts on them. And I'm... I'm not... I'm not challenging anybody at all. I'm just sharing my opinion. I value everybody else's opinion.
Well, I think you always have those entry-level jobs when a person comes in on that. Majority of them want to move up, and if they don't, they may move on. I think that... That's common in any business. And then I will also comment on the Y. Um, I think compared to where we were with the Y four years ago, I don't know the exact number of years, but several years ago, I will say, compared to where we are now, as far as them following the agreement, uh, it's been a vast improvement. And I really don't think it's fair to continue to give them the same amount of money and have the same expectations. And if we want to further change the information that they're giving us or how they're using the money, then we need to change the agreement. Because to me, you read the agreement, I think they're meeting the agreement. They may not be meeting what we're asking them to present to the fullest extent. I think some of that is their capability to do so based off of whatever system they're utilizing or the way they're coming up with the data to be able to present. And at the last presentation, they didn't say they wouldn't. They said they would try.
Yeah, Barbara did ask for the customer list after that meeting, and, um, I... I do think that she's working on that, and I... And I would agree. If the, um, the intent is to do something different, we need to look at that agreement.
So, we want to have a relationship with them, but... But we're not going a little bit of a extra mile with them in the process. That's why I'm trying to... but we're not going a little bit of an extra mile with them in the process, is what I'm trying to say.
And with that, I'd say, what about the other communities they have a relationship with? They don't provide them with financial assistance? What about Town of Latimore? How many people go there for the Y? I mean, about Kingstown, how many of Mosbury, how many people go there? And I know this from a fact, because I've talked to them, and a lot of them came in when we had our meeting here. If we build pickleball courts in Boiling Springs, I can name fifteen people that will drop their membership at the Y because that's the only reason they go, is to play pickleball. And I probably can, if you want to see them, I probably can bring them in. And then they, like, on Monday, they show up and say, you can't play today. We've got something else going on, so that kind of thing.
Well, and I'll echo some of what Pat said. I think when Ms. Fitch gave us the information, that eleven thousand dollars was sort of a roundabout figure for providing swimming lessons for second, third graders that's unaccounted for. And you add up the program totals that they put out for sports. When I did the math, it was like eighty-six thousand dollars or so that could be accounted for if they said, hey, this is where your money went to, but you only gave us forty thousand dollars, but we did all this with that money. And I think that the Y is a community center, not just for our town, but for the surrounding community. I have been concerned about subsidizing recreation for Western Cleveland County. But if that means people coming into Boiling Springs and stopping and working out and buying gas and eating at restaurants and boosting our economy, I'm good with giving them increase and continuing with the partnership. I still have some concerns about the, just showing us the numbers. And I feel better about the reports than ever before. And I just, I think the Y is much more than just a number, and I agree with Pat. I would hope that we could do an increase for them. And then with that increase, we hope that they will also increase their reporting to us and strengthen the relationship in the agreement.
I think there's an opportunity to...
About the fourth year, we've asked that.
I think there's an opportunity to better define the scope of the deliverables in the contract.
True, yeah.
Right? I mean, we have that opportunity at the beginning of the contract year coming up. And when we issue whatever the funds are, whatever level they are, say, hey, we've defined the deliverables before, but what we want, all those exact deliverables, is this math shown.
But haven't you guys asked that, Marty?
And that's what she provided. She provided us eleven thousand dollars in additional programming. She provided us five hundred and forty dollars in the fact that they provided staff for different events.
Yeah, they went through a...
But none of that directly tied to the people, taxpayers of Boiling Springs. That's how much it costs to operate the program.
As a whole, yeah.
As a whole.
But we're asking them, hey, where is the money, could you account for some of that? And that's where she says, we did swimming lessons for all second, third graders. That cost eleven thousand dollars.
All second, third graders in Cleveland County, we want to go there.
Yeah. And I would agree that that benefits not only us, but the entire community. Since it was only two thousand dollars, they're still showing some type of accounting, they're showing programming. And, yeah, and I agree with Mr. Edwards. I think there needs to be more benchmarks on that and sort of what we expect, and then in return, this is what we'll provide. And that's been very difficult. Like I said, it's been difficult in the last four budget cycles as we've tried to negotiate contracts. And been a challenge.
I guess to my point, by stipulating that in the contract, it makes it easier for us to say no in the future if and when they're not delivered upon.
I agree with it.
Right?
Yeah.
Because right now, it is arbitrary, and we're trying to coach them, we've been trying to coach them through presenting what we're asking for. And as noted, we have received more information and more metrics. But I think there's an opportunity to better define that from what we're asking and help them walk through that presentation of math.
So... Good discussion. I don't intend to limit the discussion, but the recommendation for the entire budget is for option C. And so, if we can begin to move towards some type of consensus on the budget for the next fiscal year.
I move that we adopt option C.
All right, Councilman Green with the motion to adopt option C for the budget. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Gant. Further discussion, comments?
Is that to include the increase for the YMCA?
If that's what, that's what the board feels. I do think we need to work on the contract so that we can ask them to deliver exactly what we want. And if that's what we're willing to do, then yes, I'll compromise that. And I want to say, I do think the Y is valuable to the community. I'm not, I've already said all that.
We have a motion and a second. Further comments or discussion?
Sorry about that. I'm on call, so no problem.
If not, you may record your vote electronically. All right, budget is carried four to one. All right, moving on to comments. Mr. Longino?
Thank you, sir. Our next meeting in July falls on the July Fourth holiday, assuming we don't want to show up here for that. If you all want to cancel that meeting, I'd need a motion to do so, and then we could reconvene in August.
Is there a motion from council?
Some moved.
All right. Mr. Edwards with the motion.
Second.
Second from Mr. Green. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that carries unanimously.
The only other thing I wanted to mention was, if we're okay with having election day polling at Town Hall per the email I sent out a day or two ago, I can move forward with the Board of Elections on that. We'll have to reschedule that November meeting, but we can do that as we get closer.
And I'd just like to add, I did ask at the church wine, they made that decision. And the response I got was that the people, the people who were working for the polls were going into the daycare area, tried to find restrooms. They didn't like the restroom in the gym. They were going into the, to the areas, and they were in places that they, that they shouldn't have been, and the daycare is, you know, has rules about who can be there and not, and they just found them wandering around. That was one of the reasons I was getting one. And then to the policing of the signs, you know, they said two or three times a day, they had to go out and have people tell them they couldn't put their signs up or take them down. That's what I got from, from the church wine. They had just decided it was...
Do you need a motion for this?
No, sir. If there's consensus on that, I can do that.
And we did that, we did that. We have had the general election here, right?
Yeah, and this is the off year, so...
Yes.
So, I mean, we do have the capability. It does probably cause a little... And I know last time, a lot of people showed up here thinking, since early voting was here, that the regular voting was here.
Next year will be a whole different thing, but...
It will, yeah.
All right. We will come back to Councilman Thomas. Councilman Edwards?
Nothing further.
Okay. Councilmember Gant?
I'm good. Thank you.
Councilman Litten?
No comments.
Councilman Thomas?
Comments about...
Just your final comments on the report. Start back around to you.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Councilman Green?
I don't have anything. It's just my standard comment, you know? I do enjoy the comments and how we get involved in it, but I do, once the consensus has been reached, then, you know, then I think we all still got jobs to do, and we need to still be friends as we can and move on with what we've got to do. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. I already said my piece as well, so if there is a motion for us to go into closed session?
A motion to go into closed session?
Right, Councilman Edwards, and it is seven oh one. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, I think I heard, Councilman Green. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed session at seven oh one.